Welcome to the regular council meeting of Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. At four fifty P M, council's new time in council chambers and via Zoom. Item number one is now called to order in a moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda moved by councillor Ranger, seconded by councillor Rick Owen.
It resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, we approved as certificated.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimously? Item number three is the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional and unceded territory of indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of indigenous people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. Item number four, declaration of a cuminary interest? None noted at this time. Item number five, civic petitions, there are none this evening. Item number six is delegations and presentations, again, there are none this evening. Item number seven, approval and acceptance of minutes, seven point one council minutes, moved by councillor Shaba and seconded by councillor Ranger.
It resolved that council approved the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the regular meeting of council held September 16th, 2025, and minutes of the public meeting held September 16th, 2024.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous? Item seven point two committees of council minutes, moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Ranger.
It resolved that council adopt the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Advisory Committee held January 31st, 2024, and October 30th, 2024.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous. Seven point three, local and regional board minutes, moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger.
It result that council received the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the Kirkland Lake Public Library Board held June 19th, 2025, minutes of the Kirkland Lake District Chamber Commerce Board of Directors held October 1st, November 4th, December 10th, 2024, and January 13th, 2025, minutes of the District of Timiscing Social Services Administration Board of Directors held June 18th, 2025, and minutes of the Northeastern Public Health Board of Health held June 12th, 2025.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous? Item number eight, report from municipal officers and staff. Item eight point one, operational key performance indicators, O K P I's, update 2025 quarter two, moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Lab Shaba.
It resolved that report number 2025 C A thirteen entitled Operational Key Performance Indicators, O K P I's, Update 2025 Quarter Two, be received.
Thank you, and this will be delivered by Stephanie Dell, Strategic Initiatives and Workplace Performance Coordinator. Thank you very much. You may begin.
Agreed, Madam Mayor, to members of council. Administration has revised and reformatted the O K P I reports for quarter two and ongoing. Better align them with the corporate strategic plan. The new revisions incorporate feedback that was received from quarter one report and aim to improve clarity, consistency, and usability. Some of the key changes and highlights of the new format for you, I include the alignment to the strategic plan. All departmental O K P I's are now structured according to the strategic plan's priorities and and goals. So you'll see each has the indicator next to them and it has the clear statement of the rationale, which was a big thing on why we're reporting on what we're reporting on. So there is the indicator in the rationale to those at the beginning of each department section. The graphical charts are redesigned for better readability and attachment two has an ongoing trend and comparable analysis. The line graph will always represent the reporting quarter, so for this one, it'll be quarter two, and then the columns will always be the previous quarters. So it'll continuously be compared to the quarter that we're reporting on. Most of the comments are in attachment two because there's the comparison and the trend analysis. However, the directors aren't here. If there are any specific questions relating to the months in attachment one or any of the other indicators in attachment two or one. And administration remains committed to revising, enhancing, and changing the format of the reports as well as the indicators depending on priorities of the departments. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from members of council? Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, to your worship, I'm looking at the director. I'm looking at quarter two, 2025 grievances. My question is that in June, we have a number of resolved union grievances too. I just want to know, is that through mediation and arbitration or this was the things are resolved internally? I'm on page, what's that? Nine pages seven. So Q two, 2020, oh, sorry, what is that? Q two, 2025, number of, number of resolved union grievances for June.
Agreed, Madam Mayor, I will call the director of long term. Here. Excuse me.
I said T P R, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Agreed, Madam Mayor? Can you just clarify what you need to know?
Well, what I need to know that we, I mean, I'm glad that we're resolving grievances two out of two, but I want to know if those grievances were resolved internally or if they were resolved by going through arbitration or mediation.
I don't, I don't remember.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
I believe, I'm being honest, I believe those ones were resolved internally.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, can I just follow up? The reason why I ask is that if it would resolve them internally, it would be, well, costs would be less than that to go to mediation, arbitration, all of that, words and whatnot. That's just what I'm getting at.
So yes, those were resolved internally.
Okay, thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you. Anything further from members of council on the K P I's? Okay, so I'm just inquiring, Director Forte, this is your department. So I'm just curious as to why you want thousand and change in May for winter maintenance cost as well as twelve thousand and change for winter sidewalks? April, May? For the, on that one, I didn't write down. Sorry. Well, the next one's ideas. Prior to page thirteen, fourteen, for sure. Sorry.
A lot of the costs, the way they come in and when they're paid, sometimes it don't fit directly within the month. So that what you see in May may very well include things from April and vice versa. It's difficult to sort them out unless we go through every single invoice.
So yeah, just for clarification, it's more of an invoicing issue than an actual purchase in that month.
Oh, for sure.
Thank you. Perfect. I do appreciate your time on that one. Page fourteen, this would be Director Lab Order. Just for clarification, it's regarding property standards versus bylaw enforcement. The difference of activity request and complaints have low numbers versus the inquiries which were in the hundreds. And then the activities requests versus infractions and community standards. So could you just kind of brief us on those numbers just, just a little bit? Can you get more clear?
Definitely, through Madam Mayor, to the rest of council. When we receive an activity request coming in, we can receive many requests for the same thing. They're still all logged because they normally have an address attached to them. So we have to make sure that when we do get a complaint that they're all logged through our SLIM system. So you can see discrepancies on what comes in versus what becomes down the road to an infraction. Should there be something that is actually infracticable? I'm looking at councillor Ranger that was feeding me that word that doesn't exist. And then, and then when you see the, there's proactive ones that are also placed in the system that could be something when our bylaw officer or our property standards officer is doing proactive rounds in town, then those get entered in as well.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Page twenty seven. Treasurer Lloyd Crocker, this one's for you. There is over four hundred thousand more in taxes receivable. Is that due to the budget increase or is it assessed value increase or more buildings? The more permits or is it a combination of all of the above? Page twenty seven.
Sure, Madam Mayor, to all council, short answer is all of the above. Taxes are increasing. We're starting now the new position to change what we're doing internally. So it's going to take a little while for that to show up.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I do appreciate that. And the last one, I just wanted to note the increase of meeting views on YouTube. And our Facebook followers have also increased over the last year. So it's really good to see that the amount of public engagement increasing on social media. So I think that's a testament to how amazing the team is doing on social media, especially the, those, what's going on here posts. We're getting such great feedback and I do appreciate all the teams involved in that. So thank you. Anything more from members of council? All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Item eight point two, request for easement agreement with A and A Septic Services. I can't get it. Oh, okay. So we're going to welcome acting C A L. Request for easement agreement with A and A Septic Service and Porta Potty Rentals moved by councillor Shaba, seconded by seconded by councillor Janice Ranger.
It resolved that report number 2025 D E Z twenty nine entitled Request for Easement Agreement with A A Septic Services and Porta Potty Rentals Kirkland Lake landfill be received. And then council authorized the mayor municipal clerk to execute all legal documents required for the registration of an easement agreement with A and A Septic Services and Porta Potty Rentals over the line referenced as pin six one two two seven oh five one two and unanimously referenced as Kirkland Lake landfill. And finally, that the execution by law be brought forward for three weeks on October 21st, 2025.
Thank you. And we're going to welcome Director of Development and Enterprise Services, Mr. Dan Laborder. Thank you, sir. You may begin.
Good evening, to you, Mayor, and to the rest of council. This is an easement agreement request as the mayor mentioned with A and A Septic Services and Porta Potty Rentals. This is a previously established easement agreement with a name change, so this is already in place. We are simply coming to council to let you know of the name change on it. The way it works is a five hundred meter radius of this site is to be notified with us being one of them we are bringing before you tonight. But it is pretty much housekeeping at this point.
Thank you for that. Any comments or questions from members of council? None noted? All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimously. Item eight point three, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven, mobile, sorry, Mobile Crisis Response Team Enhancement Grant, moved by councillor Ranger, seconded by councillor Owen.
It resolved that report number 2025 Corp twenty three entitled Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven Mobile Crisis Response M C R T Enhancement Grant be received and that the mayor municipal clerk be authorized to execute a transfer payment agreement and any related amendments proposed in favor of the municipality without detrimental financial impact with His Majesty the King and right of Ontario as represented by the Ministry of Solicitor General for funding under the Mobile Crisis Response Team Enhancement Grant. And finally, that the next execution by law be brought forward for three reams on October 7th, 2025 in accordance with subsection two two I V of the Towns' notice policy.
Thank you. Well, welcome Director of Corporate Services, Sean LeFert. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and to the council. On January twentieth, two thousand twenty five, the down applied for the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty seven R C R T Enhancement Grant for two hundred seventy five thousand over the two years. The application is in collaboration with the Canadian Mental Health Association and the Kirkland Lake Detachment of the Central P P. And it basically covers one point five F T mental health workers. CM H A mental health workers accompany Kirkland Lake O B P and conduct follow-up care to support area residents in the mental health crisis. The funding for the two thousand twenty five, twenty seven has been approved in that sum. And tonight, we're looking to have the transfer agreement agreement and funding approved so we can move forward with this. Obviously, it's a necessary funding for the area and we would hope the council will support.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Councillor Owen?
Yes, to your worship. I just want to mention that this is an area that's very close to my heart. Having experienced my own mental health crisis some seventeen years ago. At that time, only, I found the O P P, but only the O P P respond. This program was not in place at that time. For me, it was not an issue. But for many people in a mental health crisis, your mind, what you're thinking is distorted. Often, the police appear to be the enemy instead of the helper, whether you called them or somebody else called them. Many people who are experiencing a mental health crisis, this is, may not be their first time. And their mind twists everything from before. Having a C M H A trained worker there can make a huge difference in, in this person getting to the hospital, to the care that they need. And to me, this is a vital, vital service for our community. And we need to do whatever we can to support it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, to your worship, to the director. I'm just trying to find out here, is this a brand for just Kirkland Lake area or is it the region of Timiscing? I don't see anything yet.
Too bad, man. Basically, it's a Kirkland Lake detachment, so it's Kirkland Lake.
Good, thank you.
Councillor Ranger?
I actually was learning to teach mental health first aid and met with, it was actually the Peel Regional out of London, or it's the city of London who started the mental health crisis component with their least attachment and the success rate of making sure that everyone in those situations was safe and that there was follow-up. It was a win-win and I'm so glad that, you know, it's being spread across not only other municipalities, but the country as a whole as we built. You know, it being that everybody has mental health, whether it's in or in good mental health, we all follow more than spectrum at some point. And that this has become a common practice. I'm really glad that we're able to have the grant and continue that good work.
Yeah. Thank you. Anything further from members of council? All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimously. Item number eight point four, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six Connecting Link Design Project Management and Administrative Contract Award, moved by councillor Ranger, seconded by councillor Casey Owens.
It resolved that report number twenty twenty five P W twenty one entitled Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six Connecting Design Project Management Administration Contract Award be received. That council hereby awards Contract Concept Dash Inc. For the provision of engineering and project management administration as outlined in the scope of work identified within six twenty two twenty five R F P and is presented in the amount of one hundred fifteen thousand, sixty dollars plus H S D. And that the mayor municipal clerk be authorized to execute the contract and any related amendments proposed in favor of the municipality without detrimental impact in the form satisfactory to the chief administrative officer and director of public works. And finally, that an execution pile be brought forward for three reams on October 7th, 2025 in accordance with subsection two two I V of the Towns' notice policy.
Thank you. This will be delivered by Director of Public Works, Stephan Forte. Thank you, sir.
Evening, Madam Mayor. This is regardless, this report for the award of a contract for the design and project management of the Connecting Link twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six initiative. The project focuses on reconstruction of Highway sixty six and Duncan Avenue intersection, an area identified as critical infrastructure priority. Thanks to the successful application to the Ministry of Transportation's Connecting Links program, the town has secured funding covering ninety percent of eligible design costs. This significantly reduces our financial burden and allows us to move forward with essential upgrades. Following a competitive R F P process, Concept Dash emerged as the successful opponent. Their proposal demonstrated strong technical expertise, a clear understanding of our project goals, and a commitment to accessibility and quality. Contract award amount is a hundred fifteen thousand and change plus H S D, which aligns with our approved budget and funding estimates. Scope of the work included old debt road reconstruction, storm sewer replacement, urban sidewalk upgrades, traffic lights, and accessibility, sorry, accessibility enhancements, all of which support our asset management plan and strategic priorities. I respectfully recommend that council approve the award to Concept Dash Incorporated, authorize the mayor to review the contract and bring forward the necessary bylaw for three readings tonight. Thank you. If you have any questions in the morning.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, to your worship, to the director. One of the pages here where you have the matrix, I saw company A, company B, company C. So is there a policy not to, I don't see any of those companies or is this something new? Usually, we got everybody applying and we got it. So we got a new way of going. I'm not sure. Is our company A, company B, company C? I don't know what the A is.
To your Madam Mayor, after discussion with senior managers and procurement, it was decided that this was the more formal way of presenting the information.
Will be company A, company B, and company C.
Correct.
Councillor Owen?
Yes, to your worship, I have a number of questions. First off, I want to voice my concern that we are not being told by companies. I feel as a council, we should be informed of all the information, not just company A, company B, and company C. We should know which companies were bidding. Have we dealt with this company before?
To your Madam Mayor, yes, Concept Dash Inc. were the ones who did the design, project management, administration of the last connecting project which was on the east side of the hotel.
A follow-up. If I read the report correctly, they were not the least expensive. I'd like to know what the prices of the other bids were. Again, we, we're here making decisions and the buck stops with us. So we need to know this information, I believe.
So just to make note, we do have a procurement policy in place. And in that procurement policy, it does state that the lowest bid will not be necessarily be the successful winner, that other factors do play a role. So not to speak for the director, but I just think it's an important reminder to all of council that there are factors that the deciding team does use, not only just price. So councillor Owen?
I'm well aware of that and I'm not questioning that. I'm just asking for more facts. When we're here making a decision that involves dollars, I think we should have more facts and not less facts. And ultimately, we're the ones that answer to the public about how we spend money. So I think we need to be able to tell the public what, why we made the decision and what the differences were.
I appreciate that.
Agreed, Madam Mayor. Be fair, the matrix does have a scoring system on the price and the price can be extrapolated from those numbers. So it's not a matter of hiding them. They're, they're well presented.
Thank you. Councillor Owens?
Madam Mayor, to the rest of council, company A, B, and C are available on our council website. We're not following our own two sets of information for the same, all these, so it's right there if you don't want it.
Thank you for that extra information. Councillor Deikens?
No, could be, um. Sorry, Madam Mayor, I, I think we're told that the money was there somewhere and we extrapolated and we know where that is, but.
It's in the matrix, only price. It was worse. Three twenty. The one being fifteen being the best price.
I see. Oh, but actual dollars, we, sorry, dollar, actual dollars we can extrapolate or just where they fell?
Well, the scoring is based upon their price.
On their price, okay.
And then the successful proponent was a hundred fifteen thousand and change.
Did you have more questions, councillor Owen?
So that doesn't give us the actual dollars?
To your Madam Mayor, like I said, with these values, we can extrapolate the dollar wealth by having a successful proponents price.
Couldn't we just give us the numbers?
That's like part of procurement process.
Thank you. That is something that can be addressed through motions and through conversations with the C A O. Do you have another question?
No, your worship, I'm quite satisfied that I have to take a math class to figure out how much to tell the public.
Councillor Owen, I do appreciate your frustration while sitting at this table, but I also question that sarcasm be used less, obviously. Thank you. Councillor Shaba?
To you, your worship, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of this. Make it go forward to get going. But what the councillor always raises is very important, so we have to reconcile the two somehow. We're going to be going with company A, B, and C as supposed to be the names, that's fine with me, by the game. What he just stressed on our website, all the moves on this company, A, B, C, were all there, so they're not in our document here, but they're on our website. So maybe the director could reconcile the two. Did we go with A, B, C going forward or did we just name those companies? But it is, but it is what it is, but the two that are reconciled.
We appreciate that. Councillor Deikens?
To you, Madam Mayor, to whoever can answer this for clarity. In the pyramid process, when I, I think I can understand why you do A, B, and C, so you just do it on merits rather than the name of the company. I think once it comes to council, I think that should go away. We should have the names. That's just, I just want to add that.
I do appreciate that. As per councillor Owens and councillor Shaba, that information is readily available on our website. So council does have the opportunity to know those that this is not pertinent per se to tonight's conversation. And again, that is something that can be addressed through motions and conversations with our C A O for future reference, not a salute. We cannot change tonight, but we can change in the future. Follow up?
Yeah, thanks. And I fully understand and appreciate for tonight. But I don't think we should have to go to the website to look for information that we're making a decision on for the future. That's okay.
I appreciate and value that opinion. I differ in that opinion. I, I use our website almost daily to check for information to ensure that I'm speaking from place of facts that is made available to us through staff because not only are we council members, but we're members of the public and everything we know for the most part, other than in camera items, the members of the public know as well. So it's equal giving. Anything from council members regarding the decision we're being asked to make this evening? All in favor? Opposed? Item carried? Item eight point five, new box recycling transition update, moved by councillor Ranger, seconded by councillor Casey Owens.
It resolved that report number twenty twenty five P W twenty two entitled Blue Fox Recycling Transition Update be received for information.
And again, this item will be presented by Director of Public Works, Stephan Forte. And again, this item will be presented by Director of Public Works, Stephane Fortaine. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council? Here today to provide an update with town's transition to the new Blue Box Recycling Program under Ontario's Extended Producer Responsibility Framework. So as of October first, Darnaker can make officially transfers administration of the Blue Box Program to Circular Materials with GFL Environmental Incorporated contracted to handle curbside collection. This marks a significant shift in how recycling services are delivered, moving full responsibility from municipalities to producers. For our residents, curbside recycling will continue uninterrupted. Households may use only one recycling cart, and there is currently no limit on the number of Blue Boxes for pickup. GFL will manage service issues, including missed collections and cart replacements, and residents can contact either GFL or Circular Material directly for support. Non-eligible sources of commercial property, municipal building, and places of worship will need to arrange private recycling services by January first of twenty twenty-six. During the transition period, GFL will continue servicing select municipal and community facilities to ensure continuity. The list of acceptable recyclable materials has expanded, and updated guidelines are available on the town's website. Residents may notice yellow oops stickers on their cards. This is to help correct sorting errors and improve compliance. Financially, while the town will no longer receive Blue Box stewardship funding after October first, we will see cost savings as recycling services are removed from future waste management contracts. Our new solid waste management contract reflects this change and came into effect on October first. This transition aligns with our strategic priorities, supporting service excellence, sustainable core services, and environmental stewardship. We will continue working with circular materials to ensure residents and businesses are informed and supported through this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Counselor Ranger?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. I have some comments. I had the opportunity to speak with some constituents who've got some oops stickers. It was a great opportunity to have a dialogue about where to find information. That knowledge is power. Please spread the word. I think I kind of want to put a challenge out to our local schools that maybe our youth could be good stewards of what is recyclable and what should be in the box and not in the box. And maybe a challenge could go out to, you know, maybe doing a trivial pursuit of it, that sort, within the schools or something, because I think they're going to be key to teaching the rest of the people in the house what should go in the box and what shouldn't. I also wanted to send a message out to the community that please be patient and understanding that there's going to be some changes and there's going to be some mistakes with the new collection. And as much as we say there won't be any change to the collection, there's going to be some growing pains, and I really hope that the community understands that we've been through this before, and this is going to happen again, and it'll get sorted out. So there's contact numbers if your garbage gets missed. You know, please call those numbers and be patient and understanding with whoever picks up the phone. Nice.
Thank you. Anything further from members of council?
Yeah.
Counselor Shaba?
Yes, to you, Your Worship, to the Director. People in where I live, Chappios, we kind of have a go. We see brand-new blue boxes, and then from GFL. So I have my garage, the old one from the town of Kirkland Lake, and then this new one, which is a lot bigger. So I don't know. People are asking me. I said, I don't know. You just use whichever one that you want. I don't think the intent is for people to have two at the same time. Is this something I look into?
Absolutely.
Everybody knows that we really have two. I have two. I have two.
Through you, Madam Mayor. It's an excellent question. We will look into it. It's a good question.
Anything further from members of council? Nothing further. All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item eight point six, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven Connecting Link Program Funding Application, moved by Counselor Slayer Shaba and seconded by Counselor Owen.
Be resolved at Report Number twenty twenty-five PW twenty-three entitled twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven Connecting Link Program Funding Application be received. And finally, the council directed an application be submitted for funding through the twenty twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven Connecting Link Funding Program as presented in the report.
Thank you. And this will also be presented by Director of Public Works, Stephane Fortaine. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members? I have a little speech prepared, but I think I'm... This project is almost identical, if not identical, to the previous project that we applied for funding, which is the Duncan and Government Road Intersection. This one is proposing prospecting government road. It's the same scope of work, full reconstruction, minus sewer and water. And the only difference, as far as price goes, is that I added a bit of percentage for inflation. And it's almost an identical project that I'm suggesting for funding this time around. We're hoping I can get council support on that.
Yes. Thank you. Before opening the table, I just want to... No pressure on the Director and his department. I do want to state that we have received Connecting Link funding three years in a row after a five-year hiatus of getting no funding. So not that I'm going to jinx it, but I have full confidence in the fact that the reports that are going through to the government must be top-notch, because we haven't received that amount of funding year over year in a very long time. So I do want to congratulate you, and of course, I have my fingers crossed. Council members, any comments or questions? Nothing noted. All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimous. Thank you very much, sir. Item eight point seven, Restricted Acts Using During Twenty Twenty-Six Municipal Election, Lame Duck. Moved by Counselor Ranger, seconded by Counselor Owen.
I'll read your recommendation. Be resolved at Report Number twenty twenty-five eighty-nine thirteen entitled Restricted Acts During Twenty Twenty-Six Municipal Election, Lane Duck be received for information. And then further to Bylaw Number twenty-two ninety-two, being a bylaw to delegate administrative powers to the Chief Administrative Officer. Council further approves to delegate the following powers should a lame duck period is materialized. One, the authority to settle matters in value exceeding fifty thousand dollars currently under litigation be delegated to the Chief Administrative Officer with assistance from legal counsel where required. The authority to apply for and receive grant funding from other levels of government agencies or private sector be subject to the approval by the Chief Administrative Officer with assistance from the Treasurer. Three, the authority to take any and all necessary steps to protect the interests of the corporation of the town Kirkland Lake. Through any action or other legal proceeding in value exceeding fifty thousand dollars be delegated to the Chief Administrative Officer with assistance from legal counsel where required. Four, the authority to approve appropriate change orders in value exceeding fifty thousand dollars be delegated to the Chief Administrative Officer with assistance of the Director designated for continuance, the Treasurer, and subject to legal counsel where required and appropriate. Five, the authority to execute passage of diventure bylaws with respect to capital works approved by either twenty twenty-six council reports or prior year budgets be delegated to the Chief Administrative Officer with assistance from the Treasurer and Director of Corporate Services with the Mayor and Clerk as signatories. And finally, that an amended delegation of authority by law for the Chief Administrative Officer be presented for three readings on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. And this will... This report will be delivered by municipal clerk Jennifer Montroy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to the whole of council. The report before you this evening explains how the lame duck restrictions in the municipal act apply during the twenty twenty-six municipal elections in Kirkland Lake. At a high level, when council becomes lame duck, it becomes subject to restrictions. And for Kirkland Lake, that means five members or fewer are returning or elected for the next term. The first period runs from nomination day, which is August twenty-first, twenty twenty-six, after two P M. and until election day. The second period runs from election day, which is October twenty-six, twenty twenty-six, after eight P M. until the end of the current term, which is November fourteenth, twenty twenty-six. Counsel, what council... Sorry, the report further aligns that councils prevented from doing during those periods reviews the current delegation provisions and identifies the purposes and additional delegated authorities to ensure the continuity of the municipal operations should a lame duck situation occur. During a lame duck period, councils are restricted for performing the following actions unless already delegated, approved in the budget, or special emergency cases. Appoint or remove municipal officers, hire business employees, seller transfer real or personal property over fifty thousand, incur new liabilities or expenditures over fifty thousand, and these rules do not apply in emergency actions. Worth noting is that the stronger powers are not exempt from these restrictions and would apply there too. Council has previously approved a delegation of authority by law and gives the CAO certain authorities over hiring, expenditures, property disposition, et cetera. However, as noted in the report, there are limitations under the existing delegation that might hinder operations during a lame duck period. To ensure the continuity of operations during restricted periods, administration is recommending that the following powers be delegated to the CAO with the assistance from relevant staff and legal counsel and subject to formal reporting if a lame duck period materializes. So as a red settlement in litigation exceeding fifty thousand, apply for and accept grant funding from other governments, agencies, or private sector. Take necessary legal actions or defend the municipality in matters exceeding fifty thousand. Approve change orders exceeding fifty thousands on projects already underway. Execute diventure bylaws or borrowing bylaws for capital works already approved. There are no immediate financial impacts unless actions under these delegations are exercised, in which case council... Sorry, the CAO would report back to council. These changes would align with the town's commitment to stable operations even during election uncertainty. If it is the legal counsel to accept the recommendation, an amended delegation of authority by law would be presented for three readings of the next regular meeting. That is my summary, Madam Mayor, but I'm available for questions afterward.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Counselor Shaba?
Yes, to you, Your Worship, to the clerk. Now, when I read at first, first reading of this, I thought maybe less than fifty thousand, and it's now exceeding fifty thousand. So I'm totally uncomfortable with that, because we have issues to be settled that say million dollars. So with this, that means that the CEO has the authority to go ahead and act on his own, which can really impact our budget way down the road. So I don't know. This is for information purposes. I don't know where this fifty thousand comes from. But I mean, my preference would be to see less than fifty thousand to keep things going. Supposed to, when you say exceeding fifty thousand, that means we talk about a lot of money that we may have to settle. I know this for information purposes, but that's just my concern about the exceeding fifty thousand part. It's information that we're getting. And in my view, the election period is very short indeed. You know, I don't think the world will come to an end. You know, because we move a month or so unless... I really don't think that a lot of things will move very quickly. Even litigation, they take their time. Litigation will take time. It's not something that could be resolved right away. And any funding that's coming unless the government say, okay, I'm giving you this funding. You got to spend it tomorrow. But it will give you a timeline of what's not. So I just have a concern about value exceeding fifty thousand for instance in this submission here. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Owens?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last lame duck period, we ended up in a pickle where our fire truck got taken off the road, and we were without fire apparatus, and we had to spend the money to get one. So that one-month period could potentially happen, the end of the world. If your house is on fire, it could have been the end of your world. So to limit the municipality in a what-if case, I think, is being reckless. So there's a reason for stuff to be written this way. Hopefully, it doesn't happen. But let's not, the all or ages in the same basket and fall on it right after.
Thank you for that. I will have Madam Clerk respond to the question.
To you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Shaba. Firstly, the reason why it's not under... First, sorry, sorry. Let me restart. Firstly, this is not a report this evening for just information. They write a recommendation looking for extended powers to the CAO to have extended powers as per my summary, which means that based on the delegated authority that currently exists in place for the CAO, I'm looking for additional powers for the CAO to exercise, given A, they've already materialized, and these were lessons learned from the previous election cycle, B, are within the norm from what is being proposed or accepted by councils of other municipalities in Ontario. And going to the question about the period for which this impacts, it's not just a month. It's four months. It's two different periods. So it's going from October, sorry, August to October, and then October through to November. The reason why I can't do under five fifty thousand is because this is the Restricted Act provision under the municipal act specifically states that councils barred from restricting... Are restricted from doing anything over fifty thousand. Hence, the reason why the delegation is before you this evening and the way that it's written, over fifty thousand. This allows for the CAO to have some flexibility with already pre-existing matters. The likelihood of the CAO expending funds over a million dollars is zero. The Treasurer would not allow the CAO to do that. And the reason why I say that is because the way that the recitals are written apply that test of peer review. If it's not from internally from your treasurer, it's internally from your legal counsel, which would in turn would ask, what does the treasurer have to say? So the way that it is written, it isn't written for... Just to give more authority. It's written because in my report, I note that we've gone... The CAO has taken four different opportunities where he had to... Where he would have had to do something in an emergency situation in the last election cycle where he used his... He would have needed to use these powers, and these were lessons learned. So this is just allowing us to be better prepared and not to stop the continuity of the corporation should there be a lame duck in the next election, should there be big situations that occur that are just over the threshold of fifty thousand that require action on behalf of the existing council. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you for that education piece. Any follow-up or further questions? Counselor Owen?
Yes, to you, Your Worship. I have no problems with this. I mean, we hire people. We have to trust them, you know, to a certain extent. There is a... I believe that this whole lame duck thing has to do with the fact that if we're in a lame duck situation, we won't pass something that obligates a future council to a big expense. And so from that perspective, I fully support this. I would hope that we wouldn't hire a CAO that we didn't trust. And the clerk mentioned peer review as well. I think in most cases, if the CAO was faced with a situation where they had to spend a large amount of money, that they would bounce it off their senior management team. So I agree with the proposal.
Thank you. Counselor Ranger?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate this being my first cycle is that the clerk and the CEO and other senior managers have recognized that there was things that could improve based on previous elections. That is them being responsible for the community, and I appreciate trying to move forward these recommendations so that we don't repeat errors that... Or things that we can resolve and not have to repeat, because there may be others that we'll have to learn in this next cycle. But I appreciate the work that's been done and that we won't run into those if this gets approved.
Absolutely. Anything further from members of council? Nothing noted. All in favor? Opposed? Item carried?
I don't know. The Treasurer had just noted to me that the procurement policy still applies even that by the way that...
Yes, yes. Did all of council hear that as well? Ah, yes, yes. Did all of council hear that as well? That the, sorry, Madam.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, to all of council. I know that the the matter is already. Been voted upon, but for latitude, the treasurer brings up a good point that the town's procurement of policy will still. Be in effect. So there are parameters of protection of the corporation when it comes to the delegated authority.
Thank you for that extra note. Item eight point eight, proposed amendment to council remuneration policy moved by. Counselor Ranger, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen.
Be resolved at report number twenty twenty five eighty F fourteen entitled proposed amendment, council remuneration policy be received. When a council approve the amendment to the council remuneration policy as presented. And find that the amended council remuneration policy be inserted into the corporate policy method.
Thank you. This item will be presented by municipal clerk, Mr. Jennifer Roy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you and to the whole council. This report before you proposes an amendment to the. Council remuneration policy, specifically the mechanism for the annual cost of living adjustment, which I will refer to as. Cola for the remainder of my my summary. When the existing council remuneration policy was adopted in twenty twenty three. The cola provisions were tied to a bylaw applicable to non-union staff and the C A O. But since then, the town adopted a broader compensation and pay equity policy which superseded that bylaw. Therefore, to reduce inconsistencies, simplifying reporting and ensure fiscal prudence, administration is suggesting aligning. Council's cola method with the approach in the compensation pay equity policy. The amendment would alter the cola calculation and related reporting. The major elements include the use of the consumer price index, so the C P I. Based on the C P I as reported in July of each year. The minimum and maximum bounds, the minimum being if July's C P I is less than one percent, one and a half percent. Excuse me, the cost of living will be one point five percent. If the July C P I is greater than three percent. The cost of living is capped at the three percent. Thus, the cost of living adjustment would always fall between one and a half. And three percent regardless of the C P R extremes. The implementation timing would be any cost of living adjustment would be taking effect on January first of the year following your C P I measurement. Leaving the policy and change will result in difficulties in predicting or budgeting for council's remuneration in the collective marketing year. The proposed amendment reduces duplication, confusion, and ensures consistency across compensation policies. And with the amendment, the remuneration for council would continue to be budget annually, but now with a known adjustment range. That being one point five to three percent rather than an uncertain rate. Because the cola is constrained with a range, it reduces the risk of unexpectedly large increases that exceed the budget. As it's currently sitting. The proposal aligns with the town's rules around governance and operational clarity, ensuring policies are fair, consistent, and predictable. The proposed amendments also support councils aimed to act as good stewards of public funds. The change if approved would be effective January first twenty twenty five. And examples of next full year, of which the new cost of living method applies. Mayor's current salary is approximate approximately three thirty eight thousand two hundred and thirty four dollars. If the one and one point seven cost of living adjustment from this year. Was approved this evening, this sum would change to approximately thirty eight thousand eight hundred and eight hundred and eighty three dollars. Being a variance of approximately six hundred and fifty dollars. One councillor's current salary is approximately thirteen thousand eight hundred twenty seven dollars. If the one point seven percent cost of living adjustment was approved this evening, this sum would change to approximately fourteen thousand sixty two dollars. Being a variance of approximately two hundred and thirty five dollars each or approximately one thousand four hundred and ten dollars in total for all members. Sorry, for all councillors. Should council move forward with the approval of this amendment, the costs associated with the decision for the twenty twenty five retroactive adjustment. Will be absorbed through the normal operating portions of the mayor and council's budget. This is my summary, Madam Mayor. I'm available for questions if any, and I mean, call the treasurer to come and give me a hand if required.
Counselor, any questions or comments from council members? Counselor Owens?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, my questions are two part. I want to make sure I understand. The policy properly before I ask the real question. So this is. Going to automatically adjust or pay every year to make it easier for the budget process, right?
Correct.
Okay, so now that that's clear, my question is the following. Councils help to a higher standard than a lot of people. For what we do, for what we say, and sometimes people take pleasure and put it back on our faces. What we've said and make us do. What we have to do. But but I don't think we should have an automatic pay increase no matter how easy it makes the budget go. There's six of us plus the mayor. Our wages do not break the bank. Our wages do not have a huge impact on. The tax levy. We should be held accountable for what we say and do. And we should have a discussion about our pay every year like it is the format right now. To just automatically bump up our pay. Just says in my book that we're doing a good job and then just move on, move on, on. So I can't support this one.
Thank you for that.
You're confirmed.
Yeah.
Okay. Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Owens, I just want to confirm that it's not an automatic adjustment. It makes it easier for the budgeting. It's not an automatic adjustment. Every single. Cost of living adjustment is subject to the coun- council's approval of the budget approval process.
No, so just as a a point of clarification, so. It is during the budget process going to be put in budget. At the one point seven or the three if it tops out at three, but then at budget deliberations, we can say. No. Yeah, so it. It allows for. Easier budgeting, but at the same time, we can always. Saying that we don't want it at the time of budget process. Yeah, it's kind of.
Sorry, I shouldn't clarify, Madam.
I had just, in fairness, I had just just asked that question. What an automatic process and I was told this.
So.
Yeah, let me. Clarification.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. I apologize, Counselor. I didn't mean to make it confusing. It's automatic process in which it staff are able to apply the percentage amount to the draft budget. It's automatic process. For us to be able to put a number in front of council. If there is no. C P I or there is no established amount, it's not automatic because then we have to come back to council, explain what has been bargained. And then it would, council would have to make a determination individually at that time. So I apologize. I wasn't trying to.
Yeah.
Obviously.
No. Follow up? Good?
No, my mind's made up on it already, so.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Counselor Dykens?
Oh, yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. I'm kind of along the lines of Counselor Owens. We aren't really. I know there's a staffing part of it and whatever, but we're public servants and. I don't think it's a bad thing every year to discuss. What remuneration that we're not getting, like, it's not like a nine to five job or getting paid pro or whatever, it's. We get a stipend or whatever for. And I just think this this is too close to being staff of. Like regular staff for the town, like in terms of process. So I would, and also. When the new council comes in, maybe they can set out what their. Remuneration will be for four years, so we don't even have to come back to. Counsel each each year. So just in terms of process, I'm I'm not gonna sit about this.
Counselor Owen?
Through you, your worship. I want to make it clear that I didn't run from for council to get rich. So that was not my motivating factor. I really don't care one way or the other about a. This small of increase or decrease in my, well, decrease I wouldn't be happy with, the small of increase in my pay. The fact. That you've been calculating a budget and then we can vote not included. Still gives us the same power that we've had. Of saying, no, our wages are gonna stay at what they are. So I don't see it as a big change. But I do caution that if we do keep our wages. At what they are. Eventually, this could become a problem in attracting people who run for council. Because it can include a lot of hours and a lot of abuse. So I just caution that, but I can support this.
Do you need further clarification, Mr. Treasurer?
I'm not taking any position on this issue. I'd just like to remind everybody of the budget process a little bit. We are working on the budget right now. When these pay increases would in theory. Come into effect by policy, we may be finished the budget, we may not be finished the budget. This is a tool, we use it across the corporation, whether it's signed union agreements or administration policy, it's a policy. As the clerk pointed out, at any point in time, we can get direction to remove it. It is certainly at your at your discretion, one way or the other. It's it's a fairly simple tool for us to, you know. Incorporate the idea that everybody lives under the same cost framework, whether you're a councillor, an employee, or a right there. So we, you know, that's the reason for kind of putting it in there. The timing of it is really mostly budget driven. And and as already mentioned, you do have an opportunity to revisit it before it gets locked in.
Thank you. Counselor Ranger?
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. The Director of Finance sort of put it more clearly. I think there was just the. In my opinion, I was thinking along the lines of Counselor Owens, until there was some clarification. It's a it's a calculation for another so that they can have a number to put in for us to be able to see. And then make a decision on. And just as a side note. I think the position of of mayor is worth way more. I I thought you made more than than that, so. It's a little shocking for the amount of hours at that seat. And I hope that in the way that you've been articulating it through your report system, it's much clearer to the. Community and taxpayers. That it is not a ten hour a day job. So that wage is a little concerning to me for the amount of. Work that's in it, but or council, I think Council always made some good points as well, but. If we want more engagement in the community and. People to be drawn to try and improve the community by being councillors, that is part of the conversation. When we look at the budget and what current councillor has done, councillors have done. To either be seen with an increased awareness. For later conversation. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Owens?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So I understand what's being said and I get it, doesn't necessarily change my mind, but I get it. Would it be beneficial then instead of going down this road to present an amendment on the floor to just set? The wages for this term, we have one year left on council. And then the new council can revisit the policy on how they want to move forward. And I get you're in the budget process and I'm. Happy we're in that budget process right now. So to make life easier for the budget process. Set the wages now. But is that the possibility or is that jumping the gun?
I'll let the treasurer speak to that and then I will go to you, Counselor Dykens.
It's it's entirely at your discretion. We take direction from council. If you want to change that percentage at this point in time, that's well within your right. If you're asking me from a budget process, I I would prefer to hear it now than at the last minute and I didn't. Articulate earlier, and if you were to implement an increase at the end of the budget process, it's much harder for us to handle. Than to remove a few dollars from the budget process, so.
Absolutely.
So I move forward a motion that our wages be set right now at this meeting and so that will make it easier for, I don't know about the wording, but let's set the. Set our wages right now for two thousand twenty six fiscal year.
Well, just, yeah, one moment. Second. Okay, so Counselor Dykens will second. Do you have a specific amount in mind?
So far, we've always gone with or or our theme or our. Way of doing that's been leaving and that what it is, that's I believe what we did last year. So I don't have. We didn't, we raised it last year?
The the reason for the policy was to establish the cost of living adjustment. In accordance with the budget that was approved, it was approved with the. It was a. Oh, yeah, it was presented. That's right. It was presented with the cost of living adjustment, but approved at zero.
My my suggestion is we we've done that so far. Cost of living, I can get if. It's your main job and for staff it's different, but for us as councillors. We're not doing this to get rich, as Counselor Owen did say, so just leave it at zero percent for this year. And then move council and figure out how they want to do it. Two thousand twenty six.
For the remainder of the term of council?
Just one year left, yeah.
Counselor Ranger? Yeah, so we're gonna read that motion first and then I'll speak to that motion. Or that amendment to the finishing.
As is enough. Cause I'm writing on the doctor.
Yeah. I do it too.
Thirty three thirty four. That the the recognition of the motion on the floor, moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dolly Dykens. That the recommendation be amended to remove the last two paragraphs and the following be inserted there too. That the wages for the mayor be set for the remainder of this term of council, thirty eight thousand two hundred and thirty four dollars. And that the wages for an individual councillor be set for the remainder of this term of council. And the sum of thirteen thousand eight hundred twenty seven dollars.
Sorry, I did recognize Counselor Ranger, but due to the secondary, I would like to give Counselor Dykens the opportunity to speak. First on the matter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And my concern was process, not content, whether we go up or down, so. I do like this process where we just make a decision for. This term of office and let the next council deal with. How they want to be remunerated, so I fully support.
Thank you, Counselor Ranger.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I I don't support this particular motion. I personally would like to see, because of the strength in mayor's powers and responsibilities attached to those, I would. Really prefer to see the one point five increase for the mayor's position and councillor's position or wage stay the same, but. That's what I'd look to support.
Any further comments or questions? Counselor Owen?
It's a comment through you, worship. Since we just found out this is the right time for the Treasury Department. To know about. Any potential increase. Can we make this a policy that? The first meeting in October, that it be on the agenda. And then the Treasury Department would know ahead of time, and then we don't need this. Cola or whatever, you don't need this cost of increase and. Is that possible?
Yeah, so that that's outside of the amendment on the floor. Yeah, so that, that's outside of the amendment on the floor. Because we're deciding for this amount. So the amendment as read was to strike the last two paragraphs. I know. It is, yeah. The amendment to the current motion is to strike the last two and add, um. To set the rate at a zero percent increase for the remainder of the term. So, not saying that, no, but we have to deal with the zero percent at this. Discussion point. So I will let you continue or follow up, yeah.
Um. Counsel is getting zero percent and I think the mayor should get zero percent. Some of us on council work very hard and we're putting in a lot of hours. I personally sit on four different committees and boards. I attend as many public events as I possibly can. And, uh. I think that. We all should get the same, we're all part of the same team. Thank you.
Counselor Dykens?
Uh, just for clarity, I know the clerk mentioned what. Um, counselors get per year and I think it's too, I think the amount is thirteen thousand five hundred fifty-six, doesn't seem to make sense. I, it's just a minor issue, but still.
Thirteen thousand eight hundred twenty-seven.
That's what you said, but, um, when I do look at my paycheck, it comes to thirteen thousand five hundred fifty-six. Can we just? Check it, uh, I don't mean right now, but just before we. Um. I, I mean, it's just a matter of principle, that's all.
The figure, sorry, mine, and there's through, the figures are approximate. The, the figures I was giving for this evening are approximate.
Um, so just, yes, uh, the treasurer.
Perhaps you could use wording to, so percentage increase in the. All the current wage. There is small variations depending on payroll periods and, and having leap years and stuff like that, so. Um.
I appreciate that. Um, I just want to know that as part of the. Original group that took a zero percent increase for the first four years that we sat on council year over year. Um. And then seeing the reaction in the public after four years when we did. Um, vote for our first increase after doing the job, uh, for four years. I was quite taken aback, um, to be honest, because we had, had, all had the opportunity to. Um, decipher for ourselves. What effort and what the demands on our time was for the remuneration we got. This council again is very cognizant of. The financial responsibility of sitting at this table. Um, and the truth of the matter is. Whether you sit at this table with your feet up on the ledge in a band t-shirt. Or if you are absolutely busting your hump every day in every way, answering every email, answering every phone call. Doing your absolute best as a council, you get the same amount. It is my personal choice, sitting in this seat, to. Bust my backside for this community because I grew up here. I owe it to this community. To give them everything I can for the four years I have. I do appreciate that the hours I put in. Are much, much more than thirty-eight thousand. I would be making more as a personal support worker, working full-time. And I've given up a full-time job as a PSW. To sit at this table because it is an honor and a privilege to do this. Um, so, yes. Absolutely, the wage. You're right, I, I will say that I deserve more. I bust myself. To do what I do for this community, but I owe it to the community. So I appreciate Counselor Ranger's vote of confidence. Um, that she sees. The effort that is needed for a mayor to lead this community into the future. But also as a person. That knows the financial responsibility, I do agree. I do this job not to get rich. But because I want to do this job, so I fully support the zero percent. Any more comments on that amendment?
Not on that, but if I may through you.
Absolutely.
Is there, um, is there the will of the November seconder to, um? Um. Acquiesce to a friendly amendment to, um, to the amending motion so that it be read. In such a way that it identifies that there shall be no cost of living adjustment for members of council for the remainder of this term. Rather than identifying the sums.
Yes, it appears so.
Okay.
No, thank you. Any comments or questions from council? Okay, so we are now voting on the amendment itself, not on the original motion. Do we need to reread that amendment? No, okay, all in favor? Opposed? Item carried. Okay, so back to the original motion. What is left? Yeah, yeah.
It was moved by Counselor Ranger and seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Be it resolved at report number twenty twenty-five, A D M fourteen entitled proposed amendment to council remuneration policy be received. Um, and that there be no cost of living or cost of living adjustment. For members of council for the remainder of this term of council. That is the amended recommendation.
Okay, any comments or questions on that? Okay, that, that is, yeah, Counselor Dykens.
Sorry, uh, Madam Mayor, um. Can you read that again? It sounded like.
Yes, so through you, Madam Mayor, I did read it with the revision in the recommendation.
Yeah, but would you mind just certain?
Sorry, by Counselor Ranger, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. It resolved at report number twenty twenty-five, A D M fourteen. Entitled proposed amendment to council's remuneration policy be received. And that there be no, the next line, and that there be no cost of living adjustment. Uh, for members of council for the remainder of this term of council. So all that other stuff moves away? Okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Item carried. Thank you for that. Uh, item number eight point nine. Oh, sorry, Counselor Shaba.
I'm, I'm just gonna go back to this, uh, thing here, um. Maybe a discussion for another day. I look at item three point zero. Which is a. Uh, reimbursement. Uh, for county members, seventy-five dollars per day. Uh, is that?
Yeah, that was, sorry, because we took the vote, um. Yeah.
That wasn't part of the presentation.
Yeah, the report, yeah, that was part of the report, but not part of the recommendation.
Administration would be bringing forward a review of the policy with the new council, with the incoming council, when it comes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, moving on. Okay, so, uh, review of council conference. Policy moved by Counselor Ranger, seconded by. Counselor Casey Owens.
It resolved at report number twenty-five, A D M fifteen, entitled review of the council conference attendance policy be received for information.
Okay, and this will also be, um. Given by municipal clerk Jennifer Montoy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you to the whole council. This report before you this evening, response to council's June third motion. During the review of the current council conference attendance policy. The review was conducted prior to the twenty twenty-six budget as directed. The existing policy was adopted in twenty twenty-three and its goal. Was to provide structure around how municipal council members attend municipal governance-related conferences and to manage related costs. Our review and findings and the current assessment, uh, we have now had an opportunity to evaluate how the policy. Uh, operates and note that it has been functioning very well since its inception. Some of the strengths, uh, and successes noted are that the policy has introduced. Procedure and structure to facilitate consistent communication about which member may attend which events. The message for, by which interested members indicate interest and how attending, attendances are coordinated is working effectively. The timelines and the budgeting provisions in the policy have enabled staff to forecast conference expenses. In advance and take advantage of cost savings, so, uh, early bird registrations. Uh, reporting by council after conferences has been consistent, filling accountability and representation expectations. Expense claims have been submitted appropriately in line with the town's travel expense policy. The policy has kept council conferences expenditure within the allocated budget. Here municipal comparators suggest that curricular limits on attendance numbers and on par. Some allow fewer, some allow larger numbers depending on their own practices and if they are delegating. The mayor and other members have remained within the limits, uh, set, uh, uh, as per the policy, so the number of events they're attending or the budgets. Some of the cost-saving practices, uh, for example, carpooling, um, has been, uh, very well used to reduce travel expenses. Uh, conference expense comparison summary was supplied as part of the policy review. The summary identifies the annual attendance and breaks down the expenses by registration, accommodation, travel, meal. Um, alternatively, if council wishes to change the policy, so for example, allow more members per event. Change per member budgets, different limits. It may do so via motion. Uh, fiscally speaking, there was no loss to review this policy. Uh, however, should there be a request to increase budget allocations or attendance increments, these would require adjustments to future operating budgets. Uh, this policy continues to support the town's strategic priority, um. To service excellence and sustainable core services and good governance as it's clear, fair, consistent municipal policy. Uh, the review of the policy also reinforces the importance of timely reporting and policy clarity in municipal operations. And in conclusion, the existing council conference comments policy is functioning as intended. And as such, no immediate changes are being recommended. That is my summary, Madam Mayor. I'm available with questions if any.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from members of councils? None noted, all in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous. Item number eight point one zero, Timiscaming District Joint Compliance Audit Committee, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-nine term, moved by. Counselor Shaba, seconded by Counselor Owen.
It resolved at report number twenty twenty-five, A D M sixteen. Entitled Timiscaming District Joint Compliance Audit Committee, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-nine term. Establishment, terms of reference adoption and membership appointments be received. And that council established and appointed joint compliance audit. Committee in accordance with the Municipal Elections Act for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-nine term. And that council approved the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-nine Timiscaming District Compliance Audit Committee. Terms of represent, sorry, terms of reference as presented. And that council approved the appointment of the following members to the Timiscaming District Joint Compliance Audit Committee. Commencing on October first, twenty twenty-six and ending on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-nine. Alvin Willard, Robert Norris, Heather, Heather Sandron. Chris Ray is an alternate member and Don Stedholm is an alternate member. And noted that the respective bylaws be brought forward for three readings on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you for that. This item will also be presented by Madam Clerk Jennifer Montoy.
Thank you through you, again, Madam Mayor, to the whole council. The report before you this evening seeks to obtain approval and establish a joint compliance audit committee for the upcoming. Term under the Municipal Elections Act, as well as the adoption of their terms of reference and to reappoint the membership. By very high level, section eighty-eight thirty-seven one of the Municipal Elections Act, uh, uh, identifies that every municipality must establish. Compliance Audit Committee before October first of an election year. Uh, this committee handles applications for compliance audits of candidates and third-party advertisers, advertisers' campaign finances. So that is an alleged breach of contribution limits. The, uh, I'm sorry, the Compliance Audit Committee also considers reports from the clerk about apparent contraventions of contribution odds. The consortiums of clerks have sanctioned the proposed reappointments of the following community members to the upcoming. Term, I won't read that because I just did. Uh, the application form for compliance audit is being revised to reflect a recent Ontario Superior Court decision. Now only persons eligible to vote in the relevant election may apply for compliance audit, which is a huge change. Uh, administrative procedures for the committee, um. Example, their protocols, their notices, uh, their records. It will be established by the clerks and it typically is established by clerks, um, and we are doing so. Uh, to finalize them by November thirtieth of this year. Uh, the members of the Compliance Audit Committee will receive payment for training and meetings attended for applications. Stemming from candidates or parties who have filed in the election in Kirkland Lake only. Uh, the town is required, uh, by law to, uh, uh, as. To supplement all costs related to the Compliance Audit Committee's operations under the Municipal Elections Act. Uh, for Kirkland Lake, a compliance audit reserve fund exists, which was established in twenty twenty-three with a five thousand dollars to help cover. Potential audit expenses. Um, there has been no expenses to, in the current term. Uh, historically, no compliance audit applications have been filed in Kirkland Lake over the past four municipal election cycles. And for the next term, training costs will be budgeted through the actual expenses. Um, that. If they materialize and only if the audit applications or clerk report arises. Um, should it be the will of council to move forward with the recommendation this evening, the respective bylaw would be presented at the next regularly. Was my summary, Madam Mayor, and available for questions if any.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the council? None noted, all in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous. Item number nine is members' motions. At this time, I will ask Acting Mayor Rick Owen to come take the chair.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to bear with me, it's been a while since I've been in this chair and also. I, my, my hat's not working, so I'm, I'm trying to go off. I will be in trouble. Uh, anyways, after it's done. Okay. So. I will ask the clerk. To read, but my. To read a, uh, motion. By Mayor Stacy White, supporting Agnico Eagle Mines Limited Upper Beaver Project.
Moved by, um, Mayor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens, whereas Upper Beaver Project led by Agnico Eagle Mines Limited. Represents a significant opportunity for future economic development in the town of Kirkland Lake and within the surrounding region. And whereas the project is currently in its advanced exploration phase and undergoing a federal impact assessment for the production phase. And whereas advanced exploration activities are contributing to the local economy through employment opportunities. Education and training opportunities as well as partnerships with local businesses. And whereas council of the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake recognizes the importance of responsible resource. Exploration and development in consultation with indigenous rights holders and local stakeholders. And fostered sustainable economic growth. Therefore, be it resolved that council formally expressed its support for Agnico Eagle Mines Limited. Limited activities at the Upper Beaver Project site. And that council supported Agnico Eagle Mines Limited. Continued engagement with indigenous rights holders, local stakeholders and regulatory bodies. To ensure that activities of the Upper Beaver Project continue to be conducted responsibly and transparently. And find that a copy of this resolution, D forty-two at Agnico Eagle Mines Limited, the Impact Assessment Agency of Canada, the Ministries of Energy and Mines. The Ministry of Natural Resources, the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks. All municipalities within the District of Timiscaming, MP Timmons James Bay, MP Timmons. Timiscaming Coeur d'Alene and the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, but all. Uh, as a demonstration of the town of Kirkland Lake's council's support for the Upper Beaver Project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll ask the mayor to speak to this motion.
Uh, thank you, Acting Mayor Owen. Um, I don't have a lot to say on this. I think the motion kind of explains itself. I just do feel that this balance Kirkland Lake's commitment to reconciliation. With the support of our rich mining history. By vocalizing our support in this way, we send a message of support not only to Agnico Eagle, but to the province and other stakeholders in the area.
Does, uh, Secretary Casey Owens wish to speak?
Yes, through, uh, the mayor, uh, you see. The mayor speaks really well for what she asked you on these motions. Something I would like to add to this one though is in the. When we say that the mining, that the company helps with opportunities for education, training, as well as partnership with local businesses. It's important to note that they're a good neighbor in helping many, many, many community groups. Their names, Agnico Eagle name is all over. Different groups that offer or that help offer a better quality of life for the residents of Kirkland Lake, so that beats the knowledge as well. Cheers.
Thank you, Casey. Counselor Owens. Anyone else, uh, just comment?
Uh, yeah, I would support this motion and again, um, it. It is to be said that, uh, Agnico Eagle did. It is to be said that uh Agnega Eagle has been very much supportive of that. Uh not only all these people, but also volunteer groups all around uh area, so. Uh the last one be the festival community. They were part of that. Uh but what I'd like to see in this is, I don't know if it's possible for us to uh to forward this motion to uh. Surrounding municipalities, so don't be large or late something, something that they collect up because. We're all beneficiaries of the activities that are going on, especially in the Upper Beaver. Why not we do the motion from other municipalities for us to act out? Why not? This might be a tentative motion for for that to all those municipalities to act out.
Um it is, excuse me, it is in the motion that this sent to all municipalities. Oh, this part of our resume, it's kind of buried in the middle.
Alright. Thank you.
Uh Counselor Deikens?
Uh Acting Mayor, um to the mayor, thank you for bringing this um. Yeah, they're great corporate uh citizens, but also they're gonna be providing hundreds of money to jobs for people and. Um it's gonna continue to be the win-win for everybody, so thank you.
Okay, uh just add to that that uh in terms of mining company. Uh Agnega Eagle is the one that sets the bar on how they should operate. Within communities and within areas. That they are active in. Um they have an excellent reputation that's been built over many years. And as the company is is built in size, it is also built in its support. Of its employees and the communities that they live in, so. I will call for a book. Does anybody want to be read? No, uh call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, the next uh. Motion is by Mayor Stacy White and it is a Northern College Support Motion and I will ask the clerk to read that news.
Certainly through you. Um moved by Mayor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. Whereas access to post-secondary education is a cornerstone of community development, economic growth and social wellbeing. And whereas community colleges create local opportunities for youth, adult learners and newcomers seeking further education, skills, training. And career advancement. And whereas education is fundamental to the prosperity and sustainability of our municipality. And whereas the presence of a college will provide residents with increased opportunities for academic and vocational training. Support local businesses through workforce development and enhance the attractiveness of our community to families and employers. Therefore, be it resolved that the council of the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake formally recognizes the positive contributions to the economic development. Of Northern College of Kirkland Lake. And further that council supports the presence of Northern College in our community and advocate for future funding streams for community colleges. And finally, that a copy of this motion before to the Chief Executive Officer of Northern College, the Ministers of. College Universities Research Excellence and Security Economic Development. Job Creation and Trade, Energy and Mines, Labor, Immigration Training and Skills Development. The M P for Cochrane Timiscaming, the M P for Timmins James Bay. The Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities and the municipalities within the District of Timiscaming.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh Madam Mayor, care to speak on the motion?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Owen. Uh so this motion came out of meetings with our counterparts in Timiscaming Shores. We've been ha- holding meetings uh with the C E O, the Director of Development and Enterprise Services and myself with our counterparts. Um looking for area areas of uh like needs. So and as well as a recent meeting with Mayor Jeff and C E O Mitch Dumas and myself of Northern College. Um and we just, we want to reiterate that the Kirkland Lake campus was the first and flagship. Campus of Northern College. We have a long history together and we want to see um it continue for generations to come. Um and we wanted to let Northern College know and the province know that we are advocating strongly for their continuation. The economic drivers that having a local community college in our town. Um is unmeasurable, so we just um just wanna let the province know. That we stand beside our Northern College campus.
Thank you, your worship. Um Counselor Owens, the second here, care to speak?
Yeah, so through Acting Mayor, um it's. I think Mayor White accorded. Head on, uh there's a definite danger of losing our local campus. Um can't hide a certain article that was published last week that clearly states that. One easy way to for for our college to be able to get money is by getting rid of this one and. My parent wife said this was the first one, this was a flagship and through amalgamation, through a process that was long before me, we've lost that local. Um input, kind of like when we go to bigger boards at D S A N. Public health, bigger school board, power gets shifted out of Kirkland Lake, local input is gone and. Then we're in danger of losing it, so maybe it's an asset to our community and we kind of fight by help to make sure we keep it. Part of my friendship.
Thank you, counsel. Uh counselor. Excuse me, Ranger, sorry.
Yes, Acting Mayor, I made an error and should have uh declared a community interest. I will uh say no warrant of staying. And then he vote, but will fill out the form, my apologies, yeah. But he didn't do it.
And we have a fine.
Yes, uh I. We we are gonna recess.
No, I can read it.
It has to be exactly what you write on the page.
Yeah, it's gonna be easy. I, Dennis Ranger, am declaring a direct. Community interest on the agenda of the meeting dated October. Seventh. Uh agenda item is, sorry.
Nine point three?
Nine point three. Uh agenda title is.
Supporting Northern.
Supporting the Northern College Kirkland Lake Campus. And it is a direct, the nature of my interest is that is my employer and then I'm writing my name and signing it and submitting to the clerk now.
You have to remember yourself in the council chair, that's a new rule.
Okay, Casey, you had spoken right good finish, but anyone else care to speak? Okay, then I'll call them. Uh anybody want the motion we read?
No.
Nope. And we will call on both, all those in favor. Opposed? Carried unanimously and I can get out of the hot seat now. Oh yes, James.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Owen, looking forward to being in the seat. Item number ten, readings and considerations of bylaws. But uh number ten point one, bylaw number twenty five dash oh six four twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven. M C R T Transfer Payment Agreement, O P P, moved by Counselor Ranger, seconded by Counselor Owen.
Be resolved with the following by bylaw be read a first and second time, bylaw number twenty five sixty four. Being a bylaw authorizing the execution of a transfer payment agreement. His Majesty the King and Right of Ontario as represented by the Minister of the Solicitor General for the twenty twenty five twenty twenty seven. Move up those as response to M C R T enhancement brand.
Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor? Opposed, none noted, carried unanimously, correct? Item number ten point two, bylaw number twenty five dash oh six five twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Connecting Links Award of Design Contract six two two dash two five dash R F P.
We just did the first and second reading for twenty five sixty four, we need to do this third read. There's a second record recommended here. After the first and second, there's a third reading for twenty five.
So here.
Yes.
Okay. So that's interesting. Okay, so. I do apologize. So within item number ten point one, there is a second. Um due to the changes in our uh procedure document, we are changing the way we do things slightly. And so within that ten point one, there is a secondary uh recommendation. May proceed, Madam. Counselor Ranger, seconded by Counselor Owen.
Be resolved that the following bylaw be read a third time and numbered, passed, signed and sealed. Bylaw number twenty five sixty four being a bylaw authorizing the execution of a transfer payment agreement with His Majesty the King. And Right of Ontario as represented by the Minister of the Solicitor General for the twenty twenty five twenty twenty seven.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous. Now item ten point two. Well, the C E O was reading. Okay, uh moved by. Counselor Ranger, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens.
Be resolved that the following bylaw be read a first and second time. Bylaw number twenty five sixty five being a bylaw authorizing the execution of an agreement with Concept Dash Inc. for connecting with twenty twenty five. Twenty twenty six design project management administration as identified in six twenty two twenty five R F P.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried, second portion, if there is no questions or comments, which is too late because I already called for the vote. Uh second part of the recommendation. Moved by. Counselor Ranger, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens.
Be resolved with the following bylaw be read a third time and numbered, passed, signed and sealed. Bylaw number twenty five sixty five, being a bylaw authorizing the execution of an agreement with Concept Dash Inc. for connecting links twenty twenty five. Twenty twenty six design project management administration as identified in six twenty two twenty five R F P.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Item carried. Item number eleven, notices of motion. None noted. Item number twelve, council reports and committees of council, local regional board updates. Moved by. Counselor Ranger, seconded by Counselor Deikens.
Be resolved that the verbal updates from council be received.
Thank you. Any uh reports from members of council on their boards, committees or local events? Counselor Owen.
Your worship, um I attended the. D S A meeting on September seventeenth. I brought up the issue of the ambulance rebranding not being bilingual. I reported that a. Resident Kirkland Lake had brought this to my attention. And they are working on it. I don't quite understand what, why it's so difficult, but it is being um corrected. Um in the end, uh from what I understand. The ambulance may just say ambulance, which apparently is. Bilingual. I'm just going by. What came up during the meeting. Also in the twenty twenty uh twenty five, twenty six. Um the D S A has uh one million five hundred. Thousand five hundred thirty six thousand six hundred dollars. For uh working towards housing stabilization stabilization. Um in the district and is uh used. Uh to helping those that are at high risk of becoming homeless or those that are homeless. And they are partnership partnering with a number of other community groups. Um that are key to the program. As well, there was an issue of budgeting that was brought up by Timiscaming Shores Treasurer. Under the Strong Mayor's Act, the communities that invoke. Those powers are supposed to have their budgets into province by a certain date. Unfortunately. Uh major boards such as the Police Board, the Health Unit. And D S A's do not have their budgets done by that point. That the the municipalities have to submit theirs. So in the case of Timiscaming Shores. The the treasurer, and I assume backed by council, has chosen not to enter. Guess, I got to guess after the the what these budgets will be. So I would assume he's gonna have, he will present their budget with blanks in those places. What Timiscaming Shores Treasurer was asking for was that the budgets be done. So that uh when the municipality has to present its budget. They could come, present a complete budget to the province and the figures would match up between the different departments. Uh D S A voted to not change their budget process. And uh it was quite a long discussion, but in the end. Um so that will affect our municipality as well. Uh I think in the past, what we've done with budgets when we didn't have it was put in a guestimate, I mean an educated. Estimate, I'm not sure, um perhaps the treasurer could help me out there?
Look at that, I'm not sure how educated it was, it is a guestimate. If we try to file like basically we take a look at the historical and try and extrapolate.
Thank, I just want to note that I am giving leeway because this is the first year that we are entering into a strong mayor budget. Um and it has been addressed at several uh committees, so um I do appreciate that. This is kind of unconventional for uh council reports, but I, it's fitting for. Uh the first year at the kick of the camp, so I do appreciate that. We may continue.
Well, anyways, it would affect our our process, that's why I reported on it. I mean, I must admit, it is very admission, we could call the treasurer or council people. Okay, I had the great pleasure. And it was a pleasure of attending the grand opening of Sam's Grill. And uh. The lineup for the first hundred, uh the first hundred customers got a free put in. And the lineup was down. In front of Foodland. It was amazing to see the uh support the community throughout there. Um Sam's Grill is a uh. It's a chain, it's part of the chain. That is based in the Cambridge wealth area of Southern Ontario. And they are currently expanding to the north. Um it's particularly encouraging to me as a counselor to see. That outside corporations are recognizing Kirkland Lake as a place to locate and grow. That's, you know, really good and uh. As an individual. It's always nice to have another place to eat. But I don't, even though I don't eat out very much. I also attended the Truth and Reconciliation Powal held at Civic. Again, this year there was a very large turnout from the public. Um. There was a sea of orange t-shirts. Uh the mayor marched on a flag during the, I forget the wording, but during the official opening. Um. I think it's important that we continue down this road of of truth and reconciliation. I must admit, in the last few years, I have learned a lot of things about our history that I did not know. And uh it was a very good event. Now, you'll have to forgive me if sarcasm sarcasm comes into this part of my report. Um. I uh. I realized that some people are having a hard time adjusting to the four-way stop at Allen and Second Street. And that's unfortunate. But I recently. A a person, a resident. Who said he almost got hit at the intersection because someone didn't know how to proceed through a four-way. Stop, and he asked me whose idea was put the four-way stop, and I replied, it was my idea. Which he promptly called me an idiot. I didn't argue with him. But in any case, uh, I also talked to two. Police officers who were in my neighborhood on a different matter altogether. And they both told me that that four-way stop was long overdue. So if I'm an idiot because I'm working towards making this community a safer place for everyone, so be it. I fully accept the title as an idiot. And I'm sure there's lots of people who won't argue with that. Thank you.
Anything further from members of council? Counselor Owens?
Very bad mayor. Yes, I'm an idiot too because I wouldn't favor that one, so. Been called worse than my life. Uh, wasn't the point of my report though, so. So I I participated in uh the rather long. Our Eastern Public Health. Meeting two weeks ago. And the letter uh Counselor Owen was talking about uh by the city of Timiscopie Shore. Shore's wasn't part of the. Package, we got it wasn't discussed as they had paid him. Or even entertained as a possibility of being able to comply. Uh, they were asking for the budget be ready by no later than October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five. For this year, and then the next year be ready by September fifteenth, which the. Medical officer of health politely laughed at. Uh, and not in a condescending way, but it was unrealistic. Uh, and I've sat on the board of health long enough to know that. It's possible. It is impossible to even entertain that. And I think there's a message behind the letter is to say that the Strong Mayor's power. Wasn't thought of. It it might work on paper in Toronto or in. Queen's Park. It doesn't work in reality when you have all these other boards that contribute to municipal budgets, and it's just impossible to me. They did say they will try and get. Some form of budget. Preliminary numbers ahead of time. So it's not going to be a total blind shoot when we try to pass the budget, but it's not going to meet these uh, these dates. Uh, we did get some good news that year two of the merger budget got verbally approved. So they got the okay. Just not the letter saying, okay, so but that is common and. It's mostly for tenants' projects, but it's still part of the budget for Northeastern Public Health. I did participate, I I did. Cave to 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 peer pressure, if you want, from the Arts Council. I bought season pass for the shows that are coming, went to the first show a few weeks ago and I was. I didn't get up and dance, I don't do that. I don't sing in public, but I do, I I I supported the arts, not just the hockey this year, and it was a good show. That the committee does work hard to put on good quality entertainment for the town of Kirkland Lake and. It's, it was well attended. Kudos to them.
Thank you. Counselor Shabon and Counselor Dykens.
Thank you very much that you were. Madam Chair. People are really are very excited about the. Uh, paving, a road paving that is so badly placed, throwing up here and there and there. People are really very, very excited about that and driving small roads for a change in Kirkland Lake. And also the um ongoing construction uh of the hill uh where you live there. But I'm here, uh, I think it's it's going well. You know, a lot of people are not complaining. So that's my gate, but the the only thing that. I can say is that actually they're keeping the dust down really weak. But some of the little bit of complaint that I got from the people, there was the director that maybe you could try. Uh, to keep the dust down on weekends as well. So I don't know how many more weekends that we got before they paved that, but. Again, the dust thing is a little bit of a niche. Other than that, people are really, very, very excited. About a lot of things that are seen in town here and there, for something go. Patrick Drive or Main Street, it was a moment and another part of the town, the whole smooth and all that. So that's. Uh, that's very commendable. I'd like to thank this staff and the way we put it all together is very, very nice. I too attended the uh bylaw was very well put together. Though it's getting better and better, and I'm really uh. Impressed to see uh other school boards that bought in, you know, who must all be kids. Oh, but I mean, uh, because that would be the future, you know, for a really joint hands and work together as a community. And you're gonna start from that level. So it's now to see all the school board, the teachers and all of that. Were buying into that and to me, uh, the future of us working together as a big community, that the job really looks very, very bright. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dykens.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's not really a report. I want to refer to something that uh Counselor Owen said. Um. I think what that resident said to you was unacceptable. Um, no, I don't think we should shrug it off. Um. We we do our best and and I know you go about things very thoughtfully and you really care for your community. You can disagree with. The decision, but to call you a name is not acceptable. So I hope the rest of the public knows that too. We we do our best. And and especially yourself, I know you work really, really hard for um the council and for your constituents. And uh, name calling like that is unacceptable.
Thank you, Counselor Dykens. Sir Owen.
Um, if I may respond to that. I draw the line at physical contact. Uh, I worked as a journalist for many, many years. I've been called a lot worse than any idiot. But I I I do want to thank Counselor Dykens for bringing it up because. It is unacceptable behavior, but you know, we deal with all kinds of people. And uh, this person. I'm sure. I mean, I consider him a friend, but it wasn't a friendly idiot. Uh, so it all worked out in the wash, but. Um, I just uh want to say that uh thank you to council guidance.
Thank you. Um, so a few meetings ago during the discussion regarding winter road maintenance. Uh, during my speaking notes, I made the statement, it was my belief if we had a devoted crew, it would address some of the issues, but I was no expert. I was deeply affected when the C A O brought to my attention that some members of the crew and their family watching at home. Believed I was questioning their dedication to their jobs in this community. I wrote Director Forte right away. Uh, giving my sincere apologies to him and his whole team. As you all know, I am not above publicly apologizing from this chair when I make a mistake. I've given more time to rolling this event over in my head that I would like to admit. Moving forward, I will choose my words carefully regarding the public works department. For seven years, I've been quite vocal in my belief the town would uh should have a specific night shift. Devoted solely to winter road maintenance. While at the same time, for the last three years as mayor, I've been consistent in my praise of public works department. At every opportunity, I see the hard work they do time and time again. That being said, I realize trust can be lost in an instant and know how difficult. Building that trust back can be. Um, I am pleased to share that Planet Youth. Counselor Owens.
I, through you, Madam Mayor, I stand with you. Or behind you or however you want to put it for this. What you have just said. We'll leave it at that, but I stand with you on that comment.
Thank you. Um, I am pleased to share that Planet Youth Timiscopie received seven hundred and forty three thousand dollars in change. In federal funding for Planet Youth Initiative administered by the Northeast Public Health. The investment provided through Health Canada's youth substance use prevention programs, three to. Will strengthen the uh prevention efforts and support healthier futures for the young people in our region. I also took part in the Blanch River Health Accreditation Virtual Meeting with other stakeholders in the community. The members of the O P P Detachment Board attempted to meet uh on the seventeenth of September. However, we were unable to reach a forum again. One member has since notified the group, they will be asking their municipality to appoint another member of their council. And yet another member had not received their background check in time for the meeting. Uh, getting the board going without administrative help to provide uh is proving to be quite frustrating. As there is much work to be done to meet the requirements of legislation, but we soldier on and we will try again. This month. The Texan Tania Library Board met on the eighteenth and unanimously approved becoming the local representatives for Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. A program in which children from birth to age five receive a free book sent to them each month. I will be proudly sharing more details as the board works uh through the process to bring it to our community. In the coming months, and this will require uh support hopefully from members of staff, uh council as well. Because there will be an added impact to our stuff. Um, I attended the Take Back the Night Walk as well on the eighteenth from Keepers of the Circle Building, the old Pinnaker. To Tim Hortons East. Um, this event is held yearly to raise awareness and decrease the stigma around gender-based violence. It's hosted by the Pavilion's Women's Center and supported by Keepers of the Circle. Just to note some staggering facts. Three times more women are hurt in partner abuse than motor vehicle accidents. One in six pregnant women are being abused. Six to eight percent of emergency visits by women are due to abuse. These statistics are the reason why events like Take Back of the Night should be supported by our community to bring awareness, break the silence and reduce stigma. I met with Director Lavardur and the members of the committee setting up the Arts and Cultural Fair for twenty twenty six. Uh, the members of Kale Pride are to be br- uh, also, sorry, with members of Kale Pride. Uh, briefed me on their activities and one of the members of the organizers. Of Northern Ontario Mines and Minerals Symposium met with me as well, which I attended today. C A O Smith, Director Lavardur, and I also attended a meeting in Timiscopie Shore's with our counterparts as previously noted in this meeting. Um, Tuesday, the thirtieth, I also attended the Truth and Reconciliation, Every Child Matters Powwow. With Counselor Owen and Counselor Shabon in attendance as well. And I do want to thank Acting Mayor Rick Owen for attending the opening of Sam's Grill in my place, um, due to the fact that I. I had to be at Civic earlier than previously expected. I attended the Rotary Retreats to give welcoming remarks. The event was held and Heritage North and Salt Road members come from around the north to connect and collaborate. I learned then during the retreat that they are having a total of six of these little mini retreats this year. To ensure all the members have the opportunity to attend. Um, and during that meeting, I actually uh had the pleasure of sitting down with former mayor Dr. Richard Denton. And I just honestly, I have to say how much I appreciate running into past members of this community that served at this table. It is just. Um, an unbelievable wealth of knowledge that comes your way when you get to to speak with former council members. And then today at lunch, I gave the welcoming remarks at the Northern Ontario Mines and Minerals Symposium at Northern College. The event is held every two years in Kirkland Lake and brings many members of the mining, prospecting and explor- exploration. Community to Kirkland Lake. It's an incredible way to share not only new innovations, but a bit of our mining history as well to everyone who attended. Um, lastly, I want to personally note that from October second to October ninth is Mental Illness Awareness Week in Canada. This national campaign seeks to inform and educate Canadians about the reality of mental illness. And provides us with an opportunity to address misconceptions about mental illness and improve our understanding of mental health. This in turn promotes acceptance, respect and treatment for those living with mental illness while reducing stigma. The month of October is recognized as Depression and Mental Health Screening Month. And is essential observant that brings attention to the profound impact of mental health issues on individuals in community. It serves as a reminder that early detection and intervention are powerful tools in the quest for emotional well-being. I wear my green ribbon in October to help end the stigma of depression as a person who was raised. Uh, to believe you handle your stress and anything hard in your life, you keep going through and you just. Keep going. As a woman in my fifties. And a person in a caring profession and as a person that sits in a very critical position. Um, I understand. The weight of mental health. I now know how mentally damaged. That previous health belief can be, and I encourage everyone who is struggling to reach out. Many businesses have confidential counseling included in their health plans. The Government of Ontario and Canada both have toll free numbers to call, and there are many local therapists and counselors. Waiting to help navigate your mental health with you. You wouldn't ignore a broken arm. Please don't ignore when you're feeling broken inside. It's time we all ended the stigma around depression and mental health. Thank you, everyone. All in favor? Opposed? Item carried. Item number thirteen, proclamations and recognitions moved by. Counselor Dykens, seconded by Counselor Ranger.
Be it resolved, the council's sanction of proclamation for Local Government Week, October nineteenth to the twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, in the town of Kirkland.
Okay, uh, whereas annually, the third week of October has been designated as Local Government Week in Ontario. Offering an opportunity to recognize and appreciate the vital role municipal government has in the daily lives of everyone. And whereas the observant of Local Government Week increases awareness about the vital services and responsibilities offered by the town of Kirkland Lake. Including public participation in local decision processes. And whereas this observant highlights the meaningful and wide range of services that are fundamental to building safe, healthy and thriving communities. Municipal services have on everyday lives of residents throughout Ontario. And whereas municipalities across Ontario serve as the level of government closest to the people. Shaping the character, infrastructure and priorities of the communities they serve. And whereas the town of Kirkland Lake is committed to providing opportunities during Local Government Week that foster a deeper understanding among youth. And the broader community by offering an education campaign called You and Democracy. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Stacey White, Mayor of the Town of Kirkland Lake, do hereby proclaim October nineteenth. To the twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, as Local Government Week in the town of Kirkland Lake. All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous.
No.
Sorry, item carried. Thank you, Counselor Owens. I was looking at you and I said it anyway. Thank you. Item number fourteen, additional information, mayor and provincial policy matters. There are none this evening. Closed session, there is none this evening. Item sixteen, recommendations from matters from closed session, there are none. Item number seventeen, notice notices of reconsideration. Is there any matter that was decided this evening that members at this table wish to have reconsidered? None noted. Item number eighteen, confirmation bylaws. Eighteen point one, bylaw number twenty five dash zero six six. Um, uh, confirming proceedings moved by Counselor Dykens, seconded by Counselor Ranger.
Be resolved that the following bylaw be read first and be read a first and second time, bylaw number twenty five sixty six being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council. At its meeting held Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty five.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. So, thank you. And uh, the second recommendation moved by Counselor Ranger, seconded by Counselor Shabon.
It resolved that the following bylaw be read a third time, numbered, passed and signed and sealed. File number twenty five sixty six being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held on Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty five.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number nineteen, adjournment. I move at this regular meeting. A council will now adjourn at six thirty nine and seconded by. Counselor Douglas. Thank you.